Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, alright. Are there any audience comments or community comments?
No.
Okay, alright, moving on. Individual contracts.
I approve.
A second. Any discussion?
I think what you'll see here is a theme around special education. As you know, special education staffing is driven by, strictly driven by students and IEPs. And so when the school year starts, if we have additional IEPs and those IEPs require additional, whether it's one-on-one or small group, whatever that may be, we then have to adjust. Also, as you recall, by law, we have to follow the IEPs. Therefore, that staffing is not optional, whereas other staffing in the district, we were cutting because of the levy. Special education is one of those areas that you can't. So you'll see a theme here with parent educators and one-on-ones. Also, what we're hiring right now is bus assistants. Many of our students with special needs require an assistant on the bus with them when they ride to and from school. So we also have some of those being hired as we speak.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Alright, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, acceptance of gifts.
I move to approve.
I second, or I mean any second.
I say.
Okay, any discussion?
We have actually several tonight, some that are not listed, that we can go ahead and approve these and then, or do you want us to approve them all together? With the others, yeah, why don't we wait and do that? So in addition to the two that are listed here, we have some special donations that we want to recognize this evening. Donations that are specific to budget cuts that we had to make again due to the levy, the loss of levy funds. And so Carrie is going to say a little bit about that. And then we would like to recognize some folks from the community.
Switch the camera on there.
Okay.
Good evening, and as Superintendent Wood said, we've had a number of people come forward at different times trying to support programs that may not have been continued this year or suspended, or looking at ways that they can support students across the district in other ways. So I'm going to ask each of the groups to come up separately and kind of tell their why. They're choosing to do this and participate and how we have worked and, I'm just going to say, we've worked together and partnered so that they can find a way to impact students at this time. And so we have three tonight that are on the agenda that you're looking to approve and one that will be talking tonight. And we will have that on your next agenda in October. So first, we have Yelm FFA, who if you'd like to come up and share what you're donating. These are very significant items that have been donated. And again, it's because there are ways to close the gap in some of the services that we're able to provide this year.
So I'm Leslie Garvey, this is Kim Yarrow, she's our secretary and treasurer. And then Trinity and Diana are members of the Yelm FFA. We're donating a cattle trailer. I don't know if you guys have seen the trailer the students have been using, but the floor is falling out and the door has had to be shut with a bungee cord the past few years.
It's become a safety issue for sure. So we've had a couple of really successful years in our fundraising with our fireworks and our car show and our silent auction and STP. And we've been able to acquire this trailer that is in very great shape. And it will be, it's got, it's built blast and it's built to have it washed out well and not have wooden floors rotting out of it and things like that. So we've been able to get that and donate that to the Yelm FFA from the alumni. So we're really excited for the kids to be able to have something. It's also got separate pens in it, so they're not putting, you know, a couple of hogs into one big trailer that, that fight. So all around, it's a safety thing for the kids and we're really excited to be able to donate that to them. Next, we have the YHS Connect Booster Club. If you can come forward and share the work you've done to support our band.
Hello, thank you for having us today. We're really excited to be here. This is Ally Carr, she is the band committee treasurer and the band committee chair, Alicia Hart.
And my name is Kate Tumpus. I am the Yelm High School Booster Club president here at Yelm High School. So I'm glad everyone's here, super cool. We have band kids and when we, once the levy was, when we realized the levy was going to fail, we ended up deciding we need to do something for our band kids who are very dedicated to their music. And we're all, band is a family and we know all of the students very well and have supported many students over many tumultuous times in their lives, at high school. So yeah, we decided last summer, or this summer, once we realized the levy was going to fail, that we need to commit to create a committee so that we could assist with these programs. Because the booster club itself doesn't have enough members to run all these different programs that we want to support. So we came up with the idea to create committees. The band committee, our, their very first really large fundraiser was to bring band back at full capacity. So we know that the programs were all cut significantly, but we wanted to do, see what we could do to bring it up to just like a typical season. So we asked Mr. Pearson, he gave us an estimate and we were kind of sitting on it, waiting to decide what we were going to do. But that very first game where there was no band, we had so many members, community members come up to us and say, how are we going to bring back the band? Because this isn't even enjoyable to watch. We were like, yeah, exactly. So we decided we were going to put it online. We just put out our estimate and our very first donation was $500. And we were completely blown away and we knew it was going to be successful. And it was. We decided we were going to apply for a grant, Ally applied for a grant. And so next year, if the, if we need to do the same thing, again, to support the program, we have those funds available as well. But band is really important, music is really important and our kids can go to college on this. This isn't, it's just not, it's not just for fun. So it's very serious to us. A lot of our students play with SOGO, the Student Orchestra of Greater Olympia. Right, Student Orchestra, yeah. And, or some of our students have their own band. And they go to colleges, go to intensives, compete and stuff like that. So we really want to support them here at home at the school so that they can be prepared to go out into the community. So we hope you guys will accept our donation. And I don't know if you have any questions? Alright, thank you.
The next one that's on the agenda for this evening is a donation from Twin Star. And they are supporting, in addition, not only does Twin Star support this, but we also had a personal donation from a parent, Kathleen's also here. And then First Washington Grant is a robotics, the robotics organization. And they've also accepted or granted us some funds for this if they came about. And so again, we have three different pieces of revenue to come together. We are still waiting on a few pieces of the LOA, the Letter of Agreement, with our union to put the stipends together. But those are just right around the corner. And these funds will allow us to again have the stipends, the travel, the club and all the competitions and then students won't have any fees. So with that, invite Twin Star to come up. And Kathleen, if you would like to join or just wait. There you go. And share your why.
Thank you for having us. I'm Jody, I'm the branch manager at our Safeway location.
I'm Amy, I'm the branch manager at the Yelm location just next door.
And Twin Star Credit Union is really honored to be able to support Yelm Community Schools with the robotics program. It's, not only was Twin Star founded by educators, but we've really enjoyed our long partnership with Yelm Community Schools.
We are also members of the community, not just through Twin Star, but as residents. And I went through Yelm Community Schools as well, grew up here. And it's a privilege to be able to play a role in supporting the work that you all do.
That's all we have for you. Thank you. And lastly, this will be on again the agenda for next board meeting approval, but they're here tonight to actually present the check. And so we have representatives from OB who would like to come up and support some of our meal debt that our students have incurred over this last year.
Thank you guys for having us. I'm Chloe, I'm the marketing and community outreach specialist at OB.
And I'm Vanessa, I'm the Yelm branch manager.
OB is just a staple in this community. And when we heard that the levy didn't get passed, we knew that it was time for us to step in. And the community really rallied and pulled together the funds for, you know, the robotics. And we were like, you know, how can we help? And so the lunch program is something that's very important to kids. And it's just one of our core values to be able to support the community and be here for the kids and create an environment where they can learn and be welcome. So that was really important to us and we're really happy we could do it.
Yes, it's important for us to support the Yelm Community Schools in times of happiness, right? And in times when we really need it. And so it was really important for us to step up and help them this time.
Thank you.
So these are again, one-time grants that organizations have come together to provide during this time of maybe cutbacks, suspensions. And we hope they can approve those. Any other questions?
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, study session, Yelm High School Spotlight.
Alright, Mr. Clark and Jacobson and Mr. Clobbering and students are going to present a little bit about the high school and then also have some ASB students share about their goals for this year.
Thank you for having us. For those of you that don't know, my name is Mr. Clobbering. I get to be the principal at the high school here. And before we get into the presentation, I want to take a second and highlight not just the kids that are standing here, but as we had a rough time passing our levy, our community felt that, it was evident with the donations and everything else that is happening right now. When I got back in August, Mrs. Wolf, who runs our leadership program, has a boot camp planned every year where some of our leaders show up, kind of set their goals. They work on what they want to accomplish in the school year. And I walked out to check in on them one morning and there were 60 plus kids here volunteering their time. And it was evident that our kids care about the community as well. And so Yelm is a special place. We, I tell everybody, we have great kids here and this community should be proud of the kids that we get to serve. I am going to jump into my presentation tonight. On the left-hand side is kind of my table of contents, if you will. I'll talk a little bit about where our enrollment is and staffing updates. Mr. Clark will speak to some of the challenges that we've had staffing in our special education department. We will talk about our instructional leadership team and the work that they are doing. One of my focuses, our focus this year is to continue to improve our PLCs. For those of you that aren't familiar, that is our Wednesday morning time where teachers are collaborating. And we will continue to improve on that this year. And I'll speak briefly about athletics and activities. And Mrs. Jacobson will talk about the extension school. And lastly, but most importantly, our wonderful, amazing kids here. We'll talk about the goals that they have set for the school year. Alright, this is a head count, so not enrollment. There is a difference, head count is simply who is here. Enrollment is what we get to keep revenue for. So we do lose a few kids to Running Start because it's a great fit for them. So the head count freshmen right now, we have 451. This was last week. Sophomores, 426. We have 438 juniors, 405 seniors. We have 122 students over at the extension school right now. We have 150 students that have selected to go to Running Start, to SBSCC. However, it's only equating to a 67 full-time equivalencies. So that 150 kids, but they're mostly on partial schedules. They're here for the morning or the afternoon or vice versa. And so 67 whole students attend Running Start. We have seen an increase this year in our number of kids selecting New Market Skill Center. New Market Skill Center is a local school in Tumwater. And at one point this year, that number was almost 80. We did have some challenges with transportation and having staffing to get kids over there and back. And so as the year progressed, the last few weeks, we are at 60. Again, most of those kids are half-time. They're either selected in the morning or in the afternoon at the extension school, or I'm sorry, at New Market. On the right-hand side, I did take a look at our head count, where we were at this moment in time last year and where we are this moment in time this year. Last year, we, our head count was 1,000, and this includes the extension school. 1,829 students, we are up just a skosh from that, 1,849. With the levy, we are down from 79 teachers to 70.8. That is 70 whole teachers and four teachers that are super FTE-ing, so they don't get a planning period, they're teaching all six classes. And they're busy bees. We had six counselors that included one at the extension school, five here. We are down to four counselors. We did thankfully, appreciative of our district office and Shannon's team and our HR have worked to find some funding and grant money to post a position, a partial position that will help us at the extension school. We had four administrators and a restorative specialist or a dean. It's just the three of us right now and we're definitely feeling that impact. Last year, we had two certified support individuals. One in CTE that did work-based learning all day and another one that just supported teachers. And we do not have those positions. We did retain Ms. Hall for a partial day to continue to do work-based learning. Still have Mr. Hill, we have one athletic director still do. And it's not just our certified folks, we are down in our office support as well. We went from nine positions to eight positions and a total loss of about 30 hours a week. And we're feeling that as well, just being able to keep up tracking attendance and doing everything that we need to. Alright.
One of the big things, we started the year with a few shortfalls or staff numbers. We were minus, in our CLC room, which is our self-contained classroom, we started the year without the position field. So we've had people that may not have their specialty subbing or being in there. We have currently use a contract agency to have someone in that position now. One big piece in that though is we had five parent educators in there last year. We have four listed. We only have two parent educators in there with some of our most significant profound students, students that are needing, changing in different pieces like that, feedings and those parts. So those two ladies that we have in there working are exceptional, yes. But at some point, and you'll hear me at the end, I'm going to ask if you know someone that is willing to work with amazing kids that are, will fill your heart, please have them reach out to HR and have us look for someone that can help support our students here that sometimes need the greatest care and the greatest need, but will fill your heart with amazing joy. We also have FLC last year, which is more of your students that would be in classes a little bit more often, but also needing some more intensive pieces. We have two certified teachers there and seven parent educators. This year, we need eight parent educators as one student has a one-to-one. We do have two certified teachers. We started the year without that position filled, one of the positions not filled. We've currently just about halfway through last month, found someone and filled that position who actually came back to us, who is a retiree hire, who knows the system and knows the kids, which has been really exceptional. But we still have two open positions in that case. We have two case managers that are working with students that are mostly in classrooms, just need some little additional support. The same two have stayed on and are continuing to do those pieces. And then LRC, which really is a, students that are out in those classrooms, they may need some additional support with reading or writing or those. We had five positions last year that were all filled. We have five positions this year, we have one filled. So we have four open positions in those. So again, if you know someone that likes to work with kids and help support them, please send them our way. Sidehouse, actually Emily McIntyre, who was in our CLC, has transitioned and moved out to that position. She has four parent educators there last year. This year, she has three parent educators and one that's working half-time from here that moves out there from her FLC. So it's really a half a position, but it's hard to say half a person. So I have a lot of them. So the other part is in our SLC, which is our students with maybe behavioral pieces. We started the year with two parent educators and one cert. Right at the start of the year, we had one parent educator and one cert. So just in saying that, we have 23 parent educators that work and support our special ed classrooms. We started the year with nine total. Been really fortunate to get on the phone and get four people to come work with us who are exceptional people, so we're at 13. But you can see the shortfall of 11 people to help support our students here and make our system the best it can. So it is a great, great need. Those that are helping support the kids, especially in our CLC, exceptionally talented, but at some point, I think as we go on throughout the year, those things will build up. There are times that people get sick, there are times that, and so it'll be really important that we find the right people to come help support us, to support our students so we can be at the best we can be for all of our students. As we're working really, really hard to ensure that we maintain that. But I do know the length of a year gets long, especially after that Christmas time. So again, I really, I guarantee you, if you know someone, it will be a great fit. I'll even give you myself a reminder. But that's kind of respectful of the teacher. Thank you.
Alright, we have a phenomenal instructional leadership team. That includes the three of us and four teachers that come in and work with us on a regular basis. They did some amazing things this summer, helping us plan for the year. One of them is around our academic goal and one of them is around our belonging goal. What they decided to do as the year progresses is to make sure that our student growth goals, our PLCs, their evaluation and our team goal, it all dovetails. And so the gist of this is, beginning in the fall of 2024, teachers not only are responsible for writing student growth goals for themselves, they are responsible for proving and providing evidence to us that kids are monitoring their own growth goals. And so how are they going to do that? And so we spent a lot of time as a staff in August figuring out what that looks like. And each department is going to do it a little bit different. But one of the goals that they've created is that each department will create an action plan to have a content-specific strategies to help monitor and track their growth goals of their students across their entire department. And again, that is both academically and behaviorally. I did put up a quote there. I appreciate Mr. Woods giving us a couple of opportunities so far and we have more sessions planned to talk about the science of hope as leaders. And so something that resonated with me is that in the science of hope, the journey itself is the continuous striving and action towards a goal holds as much or more weight than the final destination. And I believe that our teachers have bought into this process and are doing some good things on our campus. The second goal, we kind of continued along from the work that we did last year around the culture of belonging. Kids take an 18-question battery, a survey of 18 questions. We have focused on measuring their, the increase of their sense of acceptance. So that means that when we look at our data, we're looking at questions 1, 3, 6, 10 and 17. The kids rank themselves basically from a 1 to a 5, a mini-year scale. And then we have made a goal, we were at a 3.5 when we looked at all 1,200 responses. We want to move from a 3.5 to a 3.7. We did not get to that goal last year, so we are sticking with the same goal this year. The other thing, and I spoke to this briefly, we are making it a focus of ours to make sure that our professional learning committees are rigorous and kids are, as staff, are doing a great job to serve our kids. They have created action steps as a department that they are going to do to improve their academic goal. And they are also creating action steps as a department that they are going to do as an English department and a math department to improve our sense of belonging. They are working on common assessments, they are tracking their data. And last, but certainly not least, that department goal that they are driving, we are going to compile all of them across the whole school and that will be our leadership team's work this year. I spoke to this a little bit already, but our academic goal is that the teachers are going to use best practices to create action plans and content-specific strategies. On the right-hand side, those are some leadership activities that we have done. The strike-through are things that we have lost revenue for and just don't have the ability to do that. So we will continue to focus on our algebra and geometry PLC. Those are two great groups of great teachers. We will also continue to focus on our algebra support elective course. And that is a course that students have been placed into based upon recommendations in eighth grade, teacher recommendations, state scores, other measures that we did. We actually went down and gave a quick assessment of all eighth graders last spring. And so we use that, place kids in there that we think will benefit from seeing if Mr. Clark is my algebra teacher, I go to him fourth period. I also go to him third period to do some pre-learning so that I'm successful in his fourth period class. And so that is our algebra support, we have two sections of them. It is a costly endeavor, but we've seen great movement with it the last couple of years. We will continue to focus on common assessments, not just in the math department, but across all content areas. We had quite a few teachers take advantage of some after-school tutoring opportunities last year. We lost that opportunity to do that this year. Our teams will continue to intervene. Again, this is analyzing their data, it's part of the PLC work. Our geometry team, which encompasses most of our sophomores, will do a boot camp for several weeks right before this spring assessment. And this spring assessment, I reference this as a coach, that is our scorecard. That's what we're evaluated on as a state. And so our geometry team does a great boot camp. Things that we're going to add, and again, I spoke to this already, so I won't spend a lot of time. The departments are being asked to document, monitor and track their data. And we're going to continue to monitor that. I get the opportunity to do 47 teacher evals, so I'm meeting with those people on a daily basis almost. And this is part of not only their eval, but it's part of the PLC, which then dovetails into our department work. Celebration, I shared the slide on the left with most of you this summer. 94% of our staff, when given this survey last year, say that they belong. 79% of our kids feel that they belong. 77% of our families feel that they belong. And I want to, on the right-hand side, I want to give a shout-out to a couple of our teachers that are doing a great job as teacher leaders. Dee Olson is one of our science teachers, Bailey Wayland, English teacher, Carol McKay, teaching in math. And Avery is another one of our English teacher. They've done a phenomenal job leading our CSIP team, our instructional leadership team. And their political capital that they have with the rest of the staff is having a huge impact. Again, I mentioned our belonging goal already, so some of our leadership action plans, we just met as a staff after school this afternoon and reminded them that last year at this time, we got a little over 1,200 students to complete this survey. And we administered it for the first time during tornado time yesterday and we are only at 9:50, so this window stays open for a little bit longer. We will keep pushing and prodding on our teachers to get that administered. We will analyze, look for patterns. Something that I was proud of our work last year, we created groups and we did empathy interviews. And it's a fancy term for basically saying, kids, tell us some anecdotal data. Tell us what's going well at the high school, what is not going well. I did type in those questions, but my eyesight is really, really bad, so I'm going to have to get closer to see it. Alright, there we go. Can you tell me what it means to have sense of belonging? Tell me about a time when you felt like you belonged at this school? What emotions did you feel? Tell me about a time you felt like you did not belong at this school? What emotions did you feel? Can you think of a time when your peers may have felt like that they didn't belong? And what did that look like? So we pulled in about 35 kids last year, got some anecdotal data. We put that anecdotal data into themes, obviously removed any confidential pieces or data points that couldn't be shared. And then we shared those anecdotes with all classroom teachers last year and it had a huge impact. And then we shared those anecdotes with all classroom teachers last year, and it had a huge impact. And I think it's led to what I would say is the best start that we have had at the high school since I've been there. Despite all the challenges that we're facing, it's been a very clean start at the high school this year. We will continue to do that. It's one of the things that they are, they, meaning Ms. Olson, Ms. Whalen, Ms. McKay, and Ms. Brookshire, they are looking forward to leading that work again this year. This is a snapshot, and I appreciate our CIS department. Kurt Foray has spent a lot of time analyzing. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but something that I can say that we are proud of is that almost every one of those is trending in the right direction. As you can see in the upper right-hand corner, it's hard to see. But when we compare fall to fall, our participation has gone up. And when we compare spring to spring, our participation has gone up as well as our trending in the right direction when it comes to how kids feel appreciated. All right. I spoke to this already. What I wanted to get out of this slide is that middle piece on the right-hand side says, the activities, the timeframe, who is the lead, what resources do you need, and what measures are you going to use? So that is the action planning document that each and every department created. We have collected all of that. And on November sixth, we're going to spend time as an entire building in the library in here, having each department share their action steps and for both academic and sense of belonging so that we know, the math team knows what the English team is working on, and the English team knows what the science team is working on. Activities and athletics. Again, I wanted to just take a snapshot of participation. And I can't quite put my finger on why our participation numbers are down, but they are down a little bit. And so when you look at cross-country, last year at this time, we had forty-three students that participated. We have twenty-nine right now. Our girls stayed the same in volleyball, seventy-seven to fifty-eight. In football, we had a hundred and fifty-seven to one thirty-nine. Girls golf, tennis, twenty-four to nineteen. Girls soccer, which is in the fall, fifty-six to forty-five. And then cheer and dance are separate because they're actually classified as activities, not fall sports. They go all year long, but they start in the fall. And so they are thirty-five to forty-one, actually up a little bit in cheer, and then down just a scoach in dance. And again, that is just the fall. That is also sports clearance. That means that they just did everything they needed to to clear. They may not finish the season, or there may be a myriad of reasons why those numbers aren't a hundred percent true. On the right-hand side, I asked our ASB office professional last year to run a list for me of all of our active clubs. And an active clubs means that they've done all the paperwork to charter through our ASB. They've got an advisory that is working with us, and they're meeting. Some of them meet weekly, some of them meet monthly. So those are our active clubs.
All right, my turn. Hi, everybody again. I'm Allyne Jacobson here at the high school and also at the Extension School. We have two goals for this year. Their our first goal is to increase our on-time graduation with our seniors. Last year, we were at fifty-three percent. We're going to shoot for sixty percent. Some of the activities that we're doing around it is teachers are creating learning plans, sitting down with the students, going over their learning plan, their goals, and classes that they need to get through and achieve throughout the year. Counselors are also providing opportunities for students to meet their graduation pathway. We have SBA, we have ASVAB, we're doing that three times. We've done one already, so two more to go. CTE. And then we are also, just in a couple of weeks, going to have a senior family night with our counselors. The counselors are going to go over with graduation pathway, credits, classes that they need for graduation, and then have time to meet one-on-one with families to look and review at their own individual student's plan and potential graduation. Our second goal is to establish and maintain a culture of dignity, just like the high school, the same belonging survey. We I'll come to that in just a bit. But some of the activities that we're going to do around it is Monday's picture day. Most of them are going to actually come in and take their pictures and get their ID badges at the Extension School, not having to go up to the high school. We're also starting monthly events. I've been talking to kids and emailing me, finding me, like, can we do this? Can we do this? Can we do this? I'm like, well, let's try. And then I have two students already participating in our C-SIP plan. They're very excited and have lots of ideas, as well as two parents that are also just joined. And then between the the fall and spring belonging survey, we're going to do student panels just to kind of gauge where we're at, hear their stories, hear some struggles and some successes, and celebrate those as well. In our belonging, last year I was trying to look through that data, and we only had fourteen students submit their surveys. And so that's kind of hard to gauge. So this year, we're really pushing, pushing hard to get all those kids to take the survey so we know exactly where they're coming from and we have something to work with for our C-SIP plan and just for their sense of belonging year-round as well. So far, we just opened it, the survey, like, two days ago, and we already have twenty-five. So we already exceeded a last year's goal. But I pulled this this morning, so I'm sure we have more since then. But of course, we have until the eighteenth, so we'll just keep pushing it, keep talking to kids. I've been looking at it because I'm very excited about what they have to say. And these are three quotes from students that typed in an answer to the belonging questions. And one of them says, I love the Extension School. Regular high school was definitely too much for me, and I'm so grateful I was able to make the switch. I feel way more successful here. The other one was, I love this school, and I'm learning more than I ever did at this school. And then my experience at this schools are great, and I'm very pleased with the support I receive. So we want to keep those coming, so we're super excited about all of that. I'm going to pass this along now to Chris Clark and ASB. Oh, no, before that, sorry, this one. Clever.
Okay, so like Mr. Clevering has said earlier, our student leadership here is pretty exceptional. And a lot of, and this is just goes to a piece that they're doing. And so they give a tireless teacher award, and they presented these to the two teachers, Ms. Hummel and Mr. Bennett. Both were the first receivers of the tireless teacher award, something that's pretty cool that they came up with and have started. And it's on their own. But so we're first going to have the ASB present with the goals and would those be? So if our ASB kids could come up and present.
Do you want to keep writing it?
Yes, please.
Sorry, we're huddling for a date then.
Awesome. All right, so I have the privilege and honor of being our YHS exec board ASB president. And this is some of my exec board teams. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Hannah Hiva. I'm the one of the public relations officers.
I'm Rebecca Rankin. I'm an inter club officer.
I'm Talia Boyd. I'm one of your ASB historians.
Awesome. I think that's all who are able to make it tonight, but we have twelve students on our exec boards? Yeah, it's a great crew. And so I'm going to start us off before these guys get to, the rest of these guys are all our class officers, so they'll get to present to you their class roles too. But as a general ASB, well, first I get the, I guess, bad job, not bad job, but we definitely struggled a little bit. That shouldn't be a surprise to them. But I'll share a little bit of how we've been feeling, and then these guys get to show what we're doing to get us out of this struggle. So our goal for the year is invest in our why. So what does that mean to us? So invest in our why. The two things that say not the most is why, and then the word invest. And so the word why, it's not the question of why, but why as in Yelm. What does it look like at Yelm? And then invest is not, how can you guys invest in us? How can our community invest in us? But how can we invest in ourselves? And so this year, we are dedicated to investing in our image, investing in what does it mean to be a Yelm high school student. And this starts with us as leaders. We are not just on ASB for the thirty minutes that we have a meeting on Wednesdays in Ms. Wolf's room, but we are students' leaders, leading by example in all of our classes, sports, while at this school and will not. Another goal of ours is to invest in ourselves and into our fellow classmates. We know many opportunities and resources are unavailable to us this year. And we know that people have chosen not to invest in us, but we are choosing to not say no to ourselves. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Sometimes it sucked to be an ASB recently. And we've been told no a lot. Can we do this? No. Can we do that? No. What about this? No. What about this thing? Maybe. And so no is a word that we have become all too familiar with. But in this struggle to find a yes, we are dedicated to asking the questions. We're dedicated to what we want and to doing more than we have with less than we've had. And so some things have resulted to doing the small things, such as last meeting, we talked about potentially helping maintenance to wash windows and volunteering our time to the image of why. Other things that we wish to accomplish is the TVs and the commons, constantly updating them with current information and pictures of recent activities. And we're utilizing the social, we're utilizing social media to highlight events and activities happening at our school. This year, we've heard many things, such as the community needs to see that you're hurting, or you don't, you can't do that, or you won't do that. And every time we hear these things, it hurts, but we continue to come back to the table. We continue to invest in our image and in our opportunities and in our ears. So that's a little bit about our goal. And then these guys are going to share some of the some of the stuff we're going to do this year.
So some events and activities, some things that we have done before and we would like to continue, and some things that we would like to add on. So we are going to continue to do Instagram spirit polls, Club Rush, which happened a few weeks ago, lunch activities. We'd like to post a five K this year. We will continue to have our MLK and Veterans Day assemblies. We would like to do the Yelm Art Walk again. And then something new this year that we are trying to put together is a powder puff game. And then we would like to also do Twister Thrift.
I think that's all we have for ASB exec board and then seniors. Wait. All right.
Thank you.
You guys have a leaner? You can have a leaner?
Mm-hmm.
Hi, some of you may know me. I'm Sam Blank. I'm your senior class president.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Alexander, new senior class historian.
And we have a few others, but they were unable to make it, but they're just as important. So our main goal is.
So our main goal this year is to increase attendance with seniors. It's getting really hard because, well, we're at our last, like, like, stretch throughout the year. So we're trying to make sure that each one of them attends their classes, which I have been seeing an increase with that with many students attending that last year they weren't. And our things of incentives and advertising that goal is helping increase our data.
All right, so we're going to advertise this in many different ways. We're thinking about Instagram, so we have these two separate pages that we have on Instagram where we can put out information that way our students can hear, but not only the students, the community as well. Morning announcements, flyers, posters, as you guys can see, I don't know if they're here, but we have a lot hung out throughout the school. And then we can also email out to our senior class. We have different things like autodilers as well. So our main message is like, you've got to put in the work, you know, put in attendance if you want to graduate. So, yeah.
We have been, we just presented this at our first senior class meeting, like, what, two weeks ago? And we're thinking of like little gifts, like, for our first one. We're thinking of doing like candy or gift cards for those that had like, had really good, like, one-hundred percent attendance. And by the end of the year, we're hoping, we have like a grand prize for the one person that's had like excellent attendance from like donations from Costco or Walmart.
And a bit to add on to that as well is, we're kids. We're not going to do something unless there's like a little reward, okay? Let's say that, all right? We have to be encouraged to do something. We have to put in the work if we want to get something out of it. And knowing us, we like food. We like snacks. We like gift cards. We like money, all right? So we want to be able to inspire those kids to be able to put in the work. That way they can get something out of it. That way they can look forward to something.
And then these are our senior meetings of what we're discussing. So the first one that we had, we were just like going over Johnston's graduation, just getting through the first stretch and completing all the graduation requirements so you're not having to worry about it later in the year. And then we're gonna, our next one is going to be more about like senioritis, get on top of your like credits, make sure you can push through this. It's like the last stretch. And then our third one is going to be more of like fun. We're going to have some games. We're going to talk about prom and then graduation. And then, of course, the last one is more focused on graduation and how it's going to roll.
And then that's pretty much it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Miles Lewis. I am the class historian. Some of my other members were able to make it, but that is okay because they're all great. Our goal is to stay on course, which basically just means that we have to stay on path for our goal, which is just to become better as people and just become, you know, have more attendance, have better, have better engagement throughout the whole year because it can get hard at times. And we will work to create an environment for students to feel comfortable engaging in school and extracurricular activities. We will do this through junior-sponsored events, meetings, events just through us. Even if we're not a part of ASB, we can have other juniors that come and help out. We will measure this by tracking sports, club, and fine arts participation and attendance at YHS events. The purpose of this is just to enhance academic performance and emotional and mental health. Here's some listed our events. The music during Pass Kids, we are still figuring that out because we're still figuring out the technology portion of it. But we are getting to it because, you know, I feel like just passing, Past Kids is only five minutes, but it can be fun. It can be entertaining. It can be engaging. Prom is a big one this year because of last year's prom. It was great, absolutely, but we feel it could have been better. So we've been working tirelessly to do that. Teachers versus student sports. We are thinking of volleyball or tug-of-war or something like that, just to have a day where we can have fun, relax. Because school can be stressful at times. Dump tank, it can be like a fundraiser where we have it set up from the middle school. I heard they had a dump tank, and we can get theirs. And we can, you know, just have, we'll have some, everybody vote on a teacher to dunk. Lunch activities, we have, I think we have had that so far, like Club Rush. And just, you know, once again, just have fun and time to relax. And then class meetings, which like now, if we count as a class meeting, but it's just to, you know, catch up and see what we need to improve on. Here are some of our class meetings. October second, officer and theme review plus feedback, which is just our feedback and see how we can improve on the goal. February fifth, overcome the mid-year slump because after coming back from Christmas, it can be hard to get back into the routine, but that is the home stretch, and that's what we really need to focus on. And finally, we have the, I think that's April, if I'm not mistaken. It's the Already Ready and Johnston's Presents. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Hi, guys. I'm Craig Von Spivey, and this is.
I'm Aiden, and I'm the sophomore class vice president.
And I'm the sophomore class president.
Before I get into this year, I'd like to talk about last year. And our goal was trying to get the, since we were incoming freshmen, and it was all previous eighth graders and how we have two middle schools in Yelm School District and how previously we hadn't grown up with each other. We were trying to get the two middle schools to, you know, get to know each other instead of having a division and that we could all, instead of being YMS or RMS, we could be YHS. And our goal this year is diving in, and we want to just like increase class participation. And the way we want to do this is an event. We're not really sure what yet because we've been slumped with homecoming preparations. And then we'd also like to start or make a donation about this year.
And this is our plan for our goal of diving in. And just to expand on that, we, last year, we were all freshmen and we were all, everyone's like, oh, welcome to high school, it's a change of life and all. Everybody has been nice, but everybody knows the feeling of being new and coming in. And then now that year is over, and now we want our class to. And then now that year is over and now we want our class to get more involved, whether that's sports or after-school activities or art or anything. There's a place for everyone here, no matter what you're into. And that's what we want. We want you to dive into S Y H S and dive in and get involved. And by that, um, we are hosting, plan to host a donation drive and stocking stuff activity during the winter for people who are less fortunate. We have clothes, toys, canned foods, anything that people really need. And we plan, like he said, we've been slumped with homecoming, so we haven't got too much detail into that, but we, that's one of our main goals. And we plan to track it by just donations and involvement and how many people show up. And we are want to stay committed and on task, make sure each person completes their assigned job at the, at the event. And this goal is relevant because it's a way, it is a way to give back to our community that everybody here and everyone that didn't have the chance to come here tonight uh, has given to us and our school, and we want to give back to them. And this event is after homecoming because like we said, slumped. And then therefore gives time to plan and prepare. And then just our, some of our sophomore class meetings. We had one a few weeks ago, just to introduce what we're doing here tonight to all of our class and see if they had any ideas, if we wanted them to participate, anything like that. And then during January, we have the line of life, Johnston Presents. And then 4:30, uh, April, we have a finish strong because everyone knows about the sophomore slump and how we, we only have, we're only a second year high school, but the end will come fast. Senior junior is going to come by fast, teenager is going to come by fast, and it's going to hit us, so we want to make sure that our class is ready and ready to graduate. And then, thank, thank you. That's it. We're excited to serve you.
Hi, we are, um, members from the freshman class, uh, ASB. I'm Carol Percy, and one of the freshman class presidents.
I'm Lucy Dubus, and I'm, and I'm the PO.
Um, this year, we decided to, uh, have just two events because freshman year, uh, we're all adjusting. And so it'd be a lot to try to do a lot, uh, of different events. But one of our big things this year is we're trying to have a supply closet because the community outreach closet isn't really there anymore. Um, so we're going to try and have like donation drives throughout the year. Um, and like with hygiene, clothing, food for students who might need those resources and don't have access to them.
Um, our school theme? Um, but it would be making the school positive. Um, we can make the school positive by encouraging other students to get more involved in more activities and having, um, and having exciting events at school, such as like games during lunch, school dances, and more extracurricular activities. Um, our main goal is to make the school more joyful.
Um, our freshman class meetings, our, our first one is next week and that's, uh, welcome to try and like, uh, get the school year off to a good start because, um, our freshman class goal is to commit. Uh, because in freshman year, um, is when a lot of kids decide if they're even going to try and graduate, uh, high schools or to try and get as many kids to realize that, that is a good thing to do. Um, our second meeting will be January 22nd and that'll be like first year, and that'll go over deeper into our commit team. And, uh, Johnston's will help us with that. And then in April, we will have a finish strong, um, and, uh, see how the year has gone, uh, meeting. That's all. Thank you.
So as you can see, our kids, uh, as you said, Johnston's will be coming in. Johnston's is, well, they, kind of where they start. You could, may have heard about them when I was a kid with rings or, or camp lifted, went out to graduation. They do more than that, so they talk about leadership and those pieces. They have themes that will follow. This year is a theme that is organized around the, come in and talk to kids about what that is. Instead of being broken between each class, it connects and builds upon itself. Um, but we do, we have an exceptional, exceptional student body here. Um, kids that are highly motivated and kids that want the most out of every experience they can have here, as all of us want for them. So, uh, you brought up earlier, you hear no a lot. Um, the part in that is, is it's a part of our job to continue to try to create a yes. And so keep coming with those. We'll keep hearing your voice and we'll try to find ways to make it happen. Again, there are, just like anything, there are challenges and positives. There's been so many positives this year from how the year started out, discipline-wise. I'm, I oversee all freshmen and seniors. Um, Ms. Jakes, you've seen us, all 10th graders and 11th graders. And Mr. Covery comes in to support on some of our bigger situations, the piece. He mentioned that he is doing more evaluations than we are, like 47, right? So in, in saying that, it's the balance between our leadership team and working together. But we couldn't do it up without the amazing staff. And again, that goes all the way down to, um, every person that we have here, our janitors, our bus drivers, all those people. Um, I do want to reach out again and say if you do go a fair education, like a broken record, it is really, really, really important for all of our kids to have that through. So, thank you again for coming and, kids, we really, really, or young adults, sorry, we really, really appreciate who you are and the leadership you're becoming.
Okay, thank you very much. Some board comments here. I'm going to start. Alright.
Okay. Should I stand up? Should I stand?
Yes.
Alright.
Good you're in the back room.
Of course, yeah. Okay, y'all can see me. So I really, really enjoyed those presentations by ASB. I never really knew exactly what ASB did. I mean, I knew you guys overlooked, you know, each class and whatnot, but I really liked those ideas. Love the passing period music idea. I, I'm running start students, so I really want people to see that. But I, I love that. I'm going to have to come in someday and see that. So those were super, super insightful and really, really creative. So props to ASB. I love those. And our donations as well. Really appreciate it from the Booster Club, Twin Star, and FFA. Um, I, sorry? OB! I knew I was forgetting one. Okay, OB, love you guys too. Thank you so much. I, my memory's not with us. But, so I wanted to say thank you to ASB. Thank you to our donators. Um, y'all are amazing. Thanks for coming.
Um, yeah, thank you for all those donations. That's definitely going to help a lot in a lot of different ways. So thank you all for your hard work and that. Um, and then, yeah, shout out to these guys that are here and just all of our ASB as a whole. It's just, I don't know, I think we've never had as good of a team as we have, um, at least in the last few years. And so if we're going to be in like, I guess, a bad situation, there's no one I'd rather be with than all of you guys and everyone else who are able to make it tonight. Um, so thank you all. And then also, um, our admin at the high school, thank you so much for the presentation. As a student, I think it was very valuable to hear about what our teachers are doing and what you guys are doing, um, when we're not in the classrooms. Thank you.
Um, I kind of just want to add on to what Lucy said. Um, I'm really appreciative that all of the classes were here to present, um, about our goals for the year. I think that Lucy summed up, um, investing in our why really well. Um, and I also want to say thank you for all of the donations. And it's really great, even though we've gone through something really difficult that I think has kind of made us all a little bit stronger and helped us come together and be a little bit more thankful.
Sorry, I didn't hear the transition. Alright, anyhow. Um, I did have a question. Claire Marie, maybe I'm able to answer this. So for your clubs that are, were listed, do those show online on our site?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll do a little research. Um, Mrs. Serkanek ran the list for me and that's where I got my information.
Okay, perfect. Because I think that it would be a really good decision to display that to the kids because some of those clubs, never heard of in my entire life, being here. And so I think it's really important to display what the kids have that our school offers to them. So I think with that being on the site is very important for us. And then, again, I really liked what we had to say about, you know, the graduation rates and everything. I think it was amazing to see. It was very informational. Shout out to ASB. You guys did awesome, especially with the ones who didn't have any other, other members. Miles, good job. You know, like Lucy said, I wouldn't want any other team because honestly, this team, seniors specifically, has been one of the best teams that I've had. So, thank you guys for putting in the work, putting in the hours, putting in your heart and soul. It really does come back and is really rewarding in the long run. So thank you.
Carrie, do you want to add to?
Well, the comment about the website is yes. If those aren't listed already, they can be. So there is a student life section on the high school website and, um, all those clubs can be listed.
In what part?
Uh, if you look at the high school website, under student life, there'll be clubs, activities, all the different things about student life.
Yeah, I was looking it up earlier.
So look under student life and it should say activities and clubs. And if they're not listed there, just need a list.
Alright. Um, I enjoyed the presentation from the high school. Um, it's really cool to watch ASB do their thing and everybody having a goal. And I think it's a good life skill to have is a goal set. And then you can see, and it takes small steps to get to that goal. You don't magically save up one day for a car. Your parents aren't going to drop a $10,000 check in your lap and you're going to all of a sudden have a car. You're going to have to babysit. You're going to have to chip away at that job. And it's cool to have those large goals in life. Um, if not, you just kind of float through day to day. It could be even when you're older. Um, you just don't have those goals. You're just going to kind of just float through life and not be able to tame much out there. Um, it's awesome to see the community step up, Twin Star, OB, FFA, to bridge those gaps where gaps are being needed, um, to watch those come about. And I liked how OB said is, how can we help? You know, and I think that's important that all of us can do is, there's a bunch of people in the community and if we work together a little bit here, a little bit there, nobody has to take on a huge task by themselves. Was at the care event last night. That was really cool to see down there. Um, I wish there was something like that when I went to high school. Um, you just kind of had your military recruiters, um, and maybe a college here or there, but it was really cool to see every branch of the military there, to the sheriff's department, to FFA, to just a broad range. It's really important for the students out there that they're, you don't necessarily have to be one track this way. Yeah, that's Carol's answer.
Frank just said it all. So, like, thank every, all the groups and businesses for their donations. We can't do alone, so. The career fair last night, I gotta, gotta say that's the best one we've ever had. Nicole did a heck of a job getting all those people there, so. Uh, thank you to the administration of the high school and all the rest of the students here for the present stations tonight. And I just have to say, we've got a whole bunch of great kids in the all-community schools.
Yeah, I want to, I want to start by thanking the local businesses and people that have stepped together with all the generosity. When, when we knew the levy was failing, we knew we were going to need the town to step up. And the town always has before, but it's never been put in a position like this to need to. And to see it in action and to see these programs being saved, it's, it's a blessing. So we are all blessed to be a part of this community. Um, I do want to thank the high school admin and the spotlight. This was a really enjoyable, a really enjoyable meeting for me, to be honest, after the last handful. And to see the students up here doing their thing. You guys are all phenomenal representatives of your classes and your classes are going to be in great hands, so keep doing what you're doing.
Okay, um, uh, was a great meeting tonight. It was, um, a pleasure after all the last few ones that we've sat through. This was just great. Um, last night's, um, event was, um, a lot of fun to see the community come together. And to be in this library with students from the high school, with young students in the STEM activities. My young granddaughter was making slime and I'm just like, oh my word. But it was full. It was busy and it was busy out there with, um, parents and older students, and it was great. And for our community to come together like it always has. And there's people that have forgot that or that didn't know that this community comes together like none other when there's a need. So I, I just can't thank everybody enough for coming together for these kids. And the students here, you guys are something else. And we knew you were here. You just had to, just, you just had to see it. And so I'm grateful. I'm so grateful to be here. Yeah, um, over a year ago, when I came here, I, I said over and over again that, um, the reason I came and wanted to be here was because of the people. Um, had no idea that we were going to have an opportunity, um, like we have, to see the generosity of this community. But, um, a big thank you to Yom FFA. Um, that's amazing. By the way, the value is $20,000. Um, that, that's pretty impressive. Um, our Booster Club, um, stepping up for our pep band and our marching band. Um, that has been fun to see. And, um, to hear our band at the football games. Um, you're right, the first game was not the same without our band there. Uh, Twin Star Credit Union, um, again and again and again, uh, they step up as partners in one way or another. Um, and it looks different every year. Uh, but a big thanks to them for specifically jumping in, uh, with middle school robotics. And then OB Credit Union, um, you know, it, it's unfortunate that we live in times where, um, we have families that can't afford, um, even school lunches and school meals. And so for groups to step up and say, we want to take care of that, that debt, is huge. We're working on, um, as a state, free meals for all of our students. And I think it's near. Um, I think we're going to get there in the next few years. Um, but until we do, uh, this is the system we have to work with. And then, thanks to, uh, parents, um, in addition to the groups that I mentioned, who stepped up and, and helped. Um, this is pretty amazing. Uh, thanks to our admin team tonight. A couple of things you do well. One of those is involving students and listening to students. And, um, as a former high school principal, um, I appreciate that. Um, also appreciate the fact that, um, Chris and Curtis wore sweater vests tonight. That was pretty impressive that you guys had sweater vests on. And it was unplanned, as far as I was told. Our students, uh, again, as a former high school principal, um, one of the biggest things that we tried to emphasize and stress was servant leadership. Um, I think you saw that and heard that here tonight. Uh, there is nothing more important and more valuable than servant leaders, uh, in our community. And you're seeing it, um, in our ninth graders, 10th and 11th and 12th graders right here, and you heard about it. Um, the thing that is most impressive to me, that what I took away from the things they shared is that they're focused on the social, emotional, and mental health of themselves and their classmates. That's not necessarily something many of us had to worry about or spend a lot of time on when we were high school students. Um, but our students last year and even the year before I got here stressed, uh, how important it was for them to know the resources available to them and then how to access those resources as it relates to social, emotional, and mental health. And you continue to see them standing up and speaking, um, for opportunities and ways that they can support their classmates. It's a pretty selfless approach and you don't see that every day from high school students. And so I think, uh, that needs to be recognized and honored and appreciated, the fact that, um, you're looking out for each other. Um, that's huge and that means a lot as the superintendent of the school district. Um, we also have a student, I'm not going to, uh, embarrass her here tonight, but later on, there will be an opportunity for me to, um, to say more about this. But we had a student that met with me to talk about, hey, Mr. Woods, how do we get graduation at Tacoma Dome? Because I want to have that opportunity as a senior that other seniors had. And so, um, she is interested in leading the charge to raise money because that is one of the things we had to cut because of costs. Um, there'll be more on that as we move forward, but, um, I'll, I'll share who she is as a later date. But very impressed. Uh, this student reached out to me, said, hey, can we meet? Um, I have a series of questions. Um, I have a series of questions to ask, I wanna know, um, how, how can we make this happen? Curtis talked about hope-inspired leadership. Uh, I just briefly wanna, uh, share, uh, John Toonheim, uh, Thurston County prosecutor, does a lot of work around the theory of hope. And, um, so I've worked with him in other capacities before I came to Yelm. And so I asked him if he would be willing to come and speak with our admin staff, our district office staff. So he came in August and then did our second session, um, this Monday. Uh, there couldn't be a better time for us to be talking about kind of the theory of hope and hope-inspired leadership than, uh, right now. And so we're gonna continue that work. And that work is also gonna lead into our strategic planning, which will take place after the holidays. Um, thank you to Terry also for the, um, event last night. Seventy community resources, education, and training programs and employers were present. Uh, sixty-two kindergarten through fifth grade students attended the STEM camp, uh, hosted by Education Rising and FFA, so a big thanks to them. And then we had approximately three hundred and fifty, uh, people that attended last night. Um, I agree, that one, uh, was even better than last year. Uh, last thing that I wanna mention, um, one more time, since Lisa is here, not to put her on the spot, but see if she has anything to add, that, uh, last board meeting, I mentioned the one point two-five million dollar grant, uh, that we received, um, from Department of Defense. It's a five-year grant and, um, it goes towards providing intensive staff training, improved assessments, targeted instruction, tailored interventions, and specifically, um, pays for two staff. Uh, but I, I wanted to say a thank you to Lisa and her department. They lead the charge on that, um, five-year grant. And Lisa, did you wanna add anything to that?
Thank you. I mean, we're just so honored to have you on, knowing you supported DODIA around this grant. I wanna thank Kendall McNabb, our director of student learning, who, uh, wrote that grant and has established a longstanding relationship with DODIA. Uh, but you're exactly right, it's really substantial funds that directly support the work in classrooms and supports building staff so that, uh, we can provide support to our teachers and to our students. So, thank you to DODIA, huge, huge, and thank you to Kendall.
And the, the target of that grant is literacy support for military-connected students, but the grant does allow us to, um, reach beyond, um, just military-connected students. So that's why that grant, um, is pretty important. So, that's all I have for tonight. Okay, alright. Uh, next board meeting is October twenty-four at, uh, the regular, uh, location, district office, at six P M. Meeting adjourned.